All right, good evening if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. All right, first up is the introduction and approval of our new Massey High School student board representatives. So Joe, would you like to introduce them?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a pleasure for me to introduce to you Kevin Brown, Michelle Kaboozie, and Will Santi. Hopefully our board reps for this year. I think they represent a nice cross-section of our school. Michelle's a senior and Will and Kevin are both juniors. We had a very interesting situation this year. In the past usually I kind of beat the bushes to find board reps, but I had a number of kids that wanted to be board reps this year. So actually Lisa Pantaleo, who's the head of our student government, the MRA, actually held interviews and you know, Will and Kevin were our selections for this year. So it's actually nice to have that. Like I said, Michelle's a senior, Will and Kevin are juniors. Michelle's a tennis player, Kevin's a volleyball player, Will's a basketball player. Michelle is a class secretary for the senior class, she's also in the strings orchestra. Will does a lot of volunteer work, especially with Panther Basketball Camp, big basketball player. And Kevin is a DECO officer and someone that some of you may have, Alan, you've been on the longest. I don't know if you were on for, but Kevin is the third in the line. I told him I was gonna say that, he said, oh yeah, I know this is coming. Kevin is the third in a long proud line of Browns who served as our board reps. Michael Brown was our first one. I don't know if you were on when Mike was on and most of people probably remember Kelsey, who was our first capstone person.
Oh, that's right.
And so now we have Kevin, our third board rep in the family.
Right.
Unless mom and dad have different plans.
[laughing]
Three super kids, I think they're gonna do a great job for us.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Kevin Brown, Michelle Kaboozie, and Will Santi as our 2016-17 Student Board of Education, student representatives for Massey High School? Thank you Alan, and I'll take Carlos as the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion passes, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
All right, we will move on to the report of the chairman. And first up is a recognition of a donation. So Jim, do you want me to turn that over to you?
I was gonna turn it directly over to Dr. Zamri because Jack works more closely with Scott and could probably speak more specifically to just how important a player Scott is with our tech department.
Are you doing back here?
Yeah, just a couple. Thank you. Yeah, I'm very pleased and proud to have Scott Pietro back with us. Scott's most recent donation is six flat panel monitors from Dell. And I wanted to just show you a little bit about how these are getting used in the schools and also put it in the broader context of the donations that Scott has made to the Monroe schools over the years. To date, Scott and his employers donated over 170 monitors to our schools. It's had a very major impact on what we can do for our students here. What we've been doing is, matter of fact, this is a picture just taken today in one of the labs, Jockey Hollow. We've been able to pair the new monitors with these small devices called Chrome Boxes. It's pictured in the bottom right corner there. They're about $200. So we get these monitors from Scott that are worth a little over 100 and it really makes a huge difference for us. We have keyboards from other machines that we've decommissioned and all of a sudden 200 bucks a pop, we're able to populate a whole lab. I had the chance to talk with these students today and middle schoolers don't hesitate to tell you the truth. I asked them, I said, "What do you think?" And they were thrilled. They're really fast machines, they were having a great experience in music class with Mr. Ansis. They were creating some great music using these devices and again, wouldn't have been possible without this donation. And again, this is just a small reflection of the broader work that Scott's done for us every single year. So had a very major impact on what we do here in the school. So I wanted to thank Scott very much for his generosity.
Thanks Scott. If we could just get a photo op over on the screen there, that would be great. Get it on our Facebook page. Jack, why don't you join us?
All right, the other thing that I wanted to bring up under chairman's report is something that came to my intention today through lots of phone calls and that is the possibility of probate court moving into Chalk Hill and the Chalk Hill space. That seems to be moving along. So I wanted to bring up a discussion as to, because I got a few phone calls saying, "What is the Board of Education's position?" And so I wanted to bring this up. Jim and I already had a conversation this afternoon about a couple of our concerns, but I wanted to bring this up to the entire board about what is a couple of your concerns? Or are you in favor of it or you know, have an open discussion as to this possibility? I will say that Jim and my concern is the, and what we would like, further information from the first selectmen as to regards to traffic flow into that school because obviously we have an elementary school and a middle school on that same campus. And also security. You know, what's security concerns that we may have with regarding to the court being there?
The first selectman has reached out a number of times over the past probably year or so asking what uses the Board of Ed could put the building to. And you know, we concluded our study with the ad hoc study and we did not have any specific needs that related to Chalk Hill. You know, our enrollment is still ticking down, this year being the first exception in a long line of declining years. But one year does not a trend make or how does that saying go? You know, we need to see what the future enrollments would be before we can make any kind of suggestions as to a Board of Ed use there. The question, as Donna I think relayed succinctly is, it's not, probate court is not a school. It's not like having Sandy Hook there. We have a wave of people come in the first thing in the morning and a wave of people leave at the end of the day. This revolves, you know, daily traffic in and out of the site. So I would be curious, you know, what kind of traffic are we talking about? How much use will probate court bring to that building? So, and the security issue because even though it's probate, there could be contentious things that happen there. So I agree with Donna. I think that some more information would be really helpful in us forming an opinion, I think, of what to do there.
So open it up Alan. That would be something we'd have to ask them what their intention is with regard to security of that property if they in fact move in there.
So they don't have a plan? They just?
Well, I don't know. Again, this is just something that came up today.
They're just pitching ideas?
No. Well, no, they've actually gone to, I guess, the state asking for the ability to move it there for approval. So it's further than just pitching ideas. They are proceeding with the approval of getting that approved to move the probate court in there.
Well, they've obviously known about it for a long time.
Well, I guess they've known about it for, to be able to generate a letter to the state for approval. How, how long that's been in the works, that I couldn't tell you.
I think from our standpoint, obviously, we've said we don't have any specific needs for that site and we don't, we're not the owners of that site any longer, right? The town owns that building. However, we obviously would have concerns around what goes into that building. So we want to give our opinion on that, so.
Absolutely correct, because you need to also keep in mind, I think it would operate between nine and five, but you know, that Chalk Hill field is starting to be used by four o'clock in the afternoon with after-school soccer and all sorts of things. Plus our kids go down there and walk from Jockey Hollow to that field in nicer weather for gym classes. You know, I know we're using that for overflow parking during the day because Jockey Hollow just doesn't have enough spots. So you know, we're gonna be actively using behind and part of that, you know, parking lot so, and with our students going in and out.
The Chalk Hill issue is so, it's so difficult to get your arms around. I mean, you know, whether to keep the building operational, not, demolish and all of those things. I have never flip-flopped in my thinking about a building as much as I have with Chalk Hill. It's, every angle has its pros and its cons and it's difficult to say which is the best solution in this particular case. Now you do know, you know, that operating a building like that, you know, if you make a commitment to operate a building like that, you have to make the commitment. You have to say, "We're gonna commit the funds that are necessary to keep the building well-maintained, to fix problems as they arise and to take that on for the long haul." Anything short of that almost spells disaster in terms of upkeep of the building and the mechanical systems that are in place there.
Carlos, I know you had something.
No, and my voice is a little hoarse, excuse me for that. Allergies, I think, I don't know. I do, I just want to voice my concern as well. I'm a little concerned about safety, security, you know, traffic. What would it look like and would you be an officer, have to be stationed there? Who would pick up that cost then?
Absolutely.
And, and I mean, I would love to see something that would be youth and family or parent oriented something. I mean, I know, just like George mentioned, we don't own the building anymore so it's more of a suggestion or recommendation, but it's not something that will get a final. Are there other options that the town has been approached with?
That I couldn't say. I don't know. I don't know, I don't have.
That we're aware of.
Right. I don't know. I mean, they may, it's just that we're not privy to it and nothing has been shared with me. I don't know, Jim, have you had any conversations and anything been shared with you?
There was a, it's not a school, I can't remember the name of it.
Oh, the Speech Academy?
The Speech Academy was one possible occupant using it up at several. Jack, you did the floor plan for that. It was a couple of.
So maybe if we could, sorry Alan, if we could request like some additional details from the town? And then allow the board members to put forth some questions, that would probably be a good first step.
Yep, Alan.
I can do that.
The Speech Academy didn't pan out?
I don't know.
We don't know. Again, that was just something that was floated. We don't know what the status of that is, if that's still something they're looking at or not.
CES doesn't have any interest?
No, I approached them last year and.
Yeah, I was wondering. No, they have new buildings. And new. I, just another quick thing is, is this going up for any vote in regards to public? Or is it just gonna be something that the first selectmen and, I don't know?
Again, I'm not sure. Always, I was, I have a copy and I can forward that to you tonight of the letter that was sent to the state asking for approval. You know, I would imagine that it's not zoned for a court. I would have to imagine that planning and zoning would need to get involved to rezone it for that use.
True.
You know, so I don't, you know, I don't know how they're doing that, you know? I would imagine that the town council would have to vote on it too.
Yeah, gotta go through that process. I was only asking because I'm sure the emails that, calls you received were all concerns.
Correct. Correct. Yes, they were, none, none were, this is a great, this is a great thing. It was, you know, "What's your opinion, what's the board's opinion?" And you know, that type of stuff. They were all concerned phone calls.
Yeah.
Donna, just.
Yes.
I echo everything that everyone said, but one of the things I think about is the, you know, the commitment of, let's say probate court does, you know, exist there. Like at some point, that may, that building may still be used for instructional purposes. It can be despite the enrollment that we've, you know, we have projecting that's decreasing. But there are lots of other things that we can do there that we can, you know, we can recommend. But if it's gonna be a long-term, and the thing that the building is on the campus, it's not like it's an individual building at a different location.
Correct, and I think that's really the concern.
The fact that it's on the campus concerns me quite a bit, so.
Right, security is my number one concern.
Yes, yes, because it's on the campus.
It's right in there.
Yeah. No, absolutely, that was our concern right away too.
Number one.
You know.
I'm sure you could probably come up with a list of questions and concerns and so forth, but just right on the top of my head is security.
And the other thing, you know, I thought about after Jim and I, you know, spoke was, okay, well, if it gets rezoned for court use, what's the stop bridge for it from saying, "We don't have enough space and we want to move more criminal type of court system up to Monroe in that building too?" You know, once you open the door for a change, well, then there may be more coming and then we certainly wouldn't want that, you know?
It's Trumbull, Monroe that it would serve?
And Eastern.
And Eastern?
The issue is, I guess it's in, well, it's in Trumbull Town Hall. The issue is that there's not enough space any longer there and it needs to move out of Trumbull Town Hall. And the question is, altogether, because I guess there's some, there's space issues there. And so the question is, where can it move to? The cost is split between the three towns. So it's not like we would be getting a lot of revenue from this. Again, it would be split and I'm not even sure, and I don't know what the financials are, if anybody even did a financial on it to say, "Well, here's how much it costs to keep it open and operating. Here's how much Trumbull contributes a year, how much Eastern contributes to a year. Does it even break even or is it a loss or whatever?" I'm not even sure that anybody did that.
But this, so the, so the cost is shared, but the school's security cost being that it's Monroe schools, does that fall on Monroe?
Well, I would imagine. Because again, I think that there's, I think, a statute as to, it's based on population, so that's how the split gets handled between the three towns, you know? So obviously Eastern would have a smaller portion, Trumbull obviously, which is larger than us, would pay, you know, more and we've somewhere, being somewhere in the middle. Since it's housed here, I would have, so anyway, what I'm trying to say is, they can't pay more. So if the split is, let's say, you know, 65, 25, 10, let's say, they're not gonna pay more for security because that's what's the mandated number that they have to pay. So it would be on Monroe, I would imagine.
Right, so right now we have more questions than we do answers.
Correct.
But it, it spices to say that the, that the security part of the bill for the schools would fall on Monroe.
Yes.
Singularly.
Correct. All right, so we have a lot of questions.
Why don't I draft the letter tomorrow and send it off to the first selectmen with a list of all the questions that we talked about here.
Great, thank you. All right, well, does anybody have anything else on that subject before we move on? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. A second. Thank you. Motion, well Diane, you have that. Do I have any questions about the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons and we will have the Massey board reps speak on what's going on. Yep.
Some of the upcoming events that we have at Massey, we have the blood drive, blood drive on September 29th. It's for students 17 and older and it's a good opportunity to do, donate blood without having to go to one of the local centers. And the fall sports seasons are underway and most of the sports are doing very well so far. The outdoor teams, track, football, soccer are very excited to use the new turf field and track that comes about.
Thank you.
On September 22nd, there will be the first FAFSA info night, which is the free application for federal student aid. And it's to help students and let them know how they're supposed to apply for that. And it's earlier this year, usually it's, we have the first night later on, but the FAFSA's being, it's opening October 1st this time, so they're opening it earlier. So the first info night is going to be on the 22nd. And then on October 1st, there's an SAT test. That'll be mostly for seniors. It's like the last chance for them to raise their scores. So mostly seniors will be going to that. And for preparation for that, on September 24th and 25th, there will be a catalyst prep boot camp to help the students.
Also during this month, on the 13th of this month, last week, we had a video from the FBI about opioid, opioid addiction. And it was very informative and it gave a lot of details that most kids don't know about addiction and the drug as a, as a whole. We also, on the 16th, had Chris Heron, who is a former NBA star. And he had a fall from fame and turned to drugs. And during the whole presentation, he, he really talked about his addiction and where it came from instead of his own personal experiences with it. He really talked about us as a whole, giving examples of the students and saying, from past experience, "I was one of those kids laughing and not taking this seriously and look at me now." The overall reaction by the students was incredible. It was so quiet in that room and you can tell everyone really felt it with even a couple of kids actually breaking down into tears. And just overall was a great experience and really interesting to learn about his experiences with drugs and learning from him.
Great, thank you so much. George?
So that was great, thanks. Joe, any comments on that? Chris Heron coming?
The feedback has been really positive. I know Shannon was actually there. I've gotten a number of emails actually from parents. I sent an email home Friday afterward, talking about the programming we had last week between the chasing the video dragon, which was, I said, collaborative effort between the FBI and the DGA that talked about opioid epidemic in this country. And then the Chris Heron story and there was a, there was a nice TEDx. If you go on and look up Chris Heron TEDx at UMass or something, it's a nice like 16-minute overview of his life. I think Kevin, you know, kinda hit the nail on the head. He didn't, you know, I expected that and I've read his book, Basketball Junkie, and I've seen his 30 for 30 again, yes again, and you know, it was really interesting. I thought he was gonna talk about his experience and everything and he did a really nice job communicating to the kids that this, you know, that presentation is not about him, it was about all of them. And he gave a lot of example, you know, kids are like communities and he's talked to, you know, through his story and whatnot. So I sent out a, I sent out a school messenger on Friday, just letting all the parents know, you know, to use that as a springboard for the conversation. And I got a number of emails actually over the weekend from parents, you know, thanking us for the programming, saying what kind of great conversation it fostered at home with them. I had a couple of kids come in to see me afterward. Everything I've heard has been very positive. It was very emotional. There was, I know some John was in, Jim was in, and there was some kids breaking down because some of his message hit pretty close to home, whether it was, you know, possible alcohol or drug abuse or just, you know, kids aren't, you know, are in a good way right now. So it was, but you know, it was a, he did it, his message came across in a very, very good way. It was really good. Because I, you know, I think somebody's gonna say, "Hey, this is how great I was, what happened to me." But his was much more personalized. And the feedback, like I said, from parents, from kids, teachers, emails went well, everything was pretty positive.
To watch him, he was so soft-spoken that you wouldn't think he was gonna have that kind of an impact. But you know, when you're in a gymnasium and there's 1,100 kids in that place and you could hear a pin drop while he was talking. He was talking no stronger in voice than I am to you right now. And the place was, you know, quiet as could be. I pulled some kids on the way out and to Joe's point, I mean, the message was, "Oh my God, that was powerful," was what I was hearing from the kids. We follow up tomorrow, we have a meeting at town hall to begin our planning for a late winter or early spring opioid forum here, probably hosted in the auditorium or in this room to continue the conversation. So this is not a, you know, a one-shot fixes all. This is a continuing effort with Adam, the high school and all of our, all of our schools, so.
Yeah, Carlos?
I just want to mention that I've sat through Chris's presentation and I applaud you, Joe, and all those that brought him here and were able to expose our students to him. It's a great day presentation. We brought him over to Wilton and Wilton High was able to, I was part of a committee that brought him there. And again, the students really speak highly and I really, again, applaud that we were able to do this. I mean, if we could do something like this every other year or every third year, whatever the case may be, it would be great for every group to get this, get the same message. And we've really gotta be proactive about the opioid situation that's going on in our country, so. It's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, do we have any more committee or liaison reports this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
And I have a few things I've had to add to the, to the agenda from my part of the agenda this evening. First of all, we received a gift, as you know, I mean, the PTO Booster Club gave us $25,000 towards the field so far. We, Gabby has been in touch with Pam Boozie, who had set up a scholarship fund in the name of her husband, Tom, and their son Todd, who was tragically killed. And that fund was difficult, I guess, to manage and to perpetuate. And so she was thinking of a way, along with Gabby's input, to putting that fund, the money that was left in that fund to use on the field. As you know, Tom Boozie, former first selectman here in town, was instrumental in all the renovations that occurred down that field. So he had a certain pride of ownership in that field down there. And so she would like to donate $43,723 for the purchase of the new scoreboard. And in the bottom of that, it would say, "In memory of Tom Todd Boozie", in a space that's always earmarked for that kind of message on all of these scoreboards that are out there. So maybe at a future board meeting, we could have Pam come and thank her publicly as well for that. Concerning the turf field renovation, everything has been going fabulously. Today, I think, was the first day that we didn't have work on the field because of rain. I mean, it's just been a phenomenal building season for this kind of thing. We've run into, and I became aware of it on Friday, late Friday afternoon, we've run into one, one unknown that happened. And that is, there is a section of the current track, we knew there were the edges, there were some edges of the track which were not adhered firmly to the asphalt beneath. And so that was all part of the work that had to be done, was to re-glue that, those places. We found an area, it's a fairly extensive area, it's about 350 feet long and it varies in width from about one lane to three lanes. It's not always continuous, where that rubber mat, it's a three-quarter inch or so thick rubber mat, is not adhering well to the base, to the asphalt base. Could we live with it and resurface it and go forward? We absolutely can. The life expectancy on that, however, would only be probably four to five years. With the new structural coating that's going down on all of the rest of the track, we fully expect a minimum of eight years of longevity still on the original track because it's only 12 years old now and typically you'll get 20 to 22 years on a track before you need to replace it. The contractor was down today, along with our architect from Mylon and McBroom, looking it over. And they came up with a suggestion that we rip up this 350-foot section, about three lanes wide, which is really more than needs to be done, but it would make it, you know, a better repair. And to do that work tomorrow, okay? So this is kind of an emergency because they're ready to start going forward with all the other work that has to be done for $17,500, okay? And in that case, what we would end up with is a track that four or five years from now does not have a big patch in it because this, this area failed, okay? And we'll get a better product and it would be, you know, it would be usable through the life of the remainder of the track, probably up to 20 or 22 years total longevity. So I'm looking for your blessing to give the okay to start this tomorrow, tear that area out. It's one of those things, like I say, can we live with it? We could. But I think we would be doing a disservice to the community four years down the road and you know, then the thing failed at that point and they say, "Well, why didn't we take care of it when we had the chance?" And the $17,000 price tag, I think, is reasonable because they have the men on site, they have the materials on site, they could do it tomorrow or within a day or two.
Why isn't it adhering?
Well, it's funny that you ask that question because we have good adherence in most all of the rest of the track except along a couple of the edges. I have a theory and you know, it's my wild theory because it's the only place on the track that has shade. So I'm wondering if it's not a moisture issue that was underneath and maybe the. So I'm wondering if it's not a moisture issue that was underneath and maybe the, they put a, a, a material on top of the asphalt which uh helps adhesion of this black rubber mat. Um so there's two speculations. One, that that did not work well because maybe it was damp. Or maybe it, it wasn't done properly in the first place twelve years ago. Or is it a weather related thing that, you know, just, like I say, I'm down there almost every day and that, that's the only place on the track that has morning shadow. And it stays there till almost eleven o'clock, right, Joe? Uh before that begins to heat up and, and get warm. So I suspect strongly that it's a moisture, maybe a moisture problem, but maybe it was exacerbated by uh when, when the thing was first put down and it didn't adhere properly because of that. So that would be my guess.
The contract doesn't cover that where, where the contractor would absorb the cost to, to get it as it's supposed to be?
There was a, there was a square footage allotment where we anticipated some repairs like this. There was, right from the, from the get-go. The problem, you know, the problem that we're faced with is that we were, we were given one point six... How many millions?
We were given by the town?
By the town.
One point seven million.
Let's call it round numbers, one point seven million. It's actually a little bit less than that.
Mm-hmm.
Um for a two point two million dollar project. And we were left to fundraise and to, to generate more uh income to get the, the scoreboard in place, the lights in place and the sound system in place. Um you know, as it is now, we will tip into our capital reserve fund uh with this project in place to the tune of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, round numbers, right, Cap? Okay. So we're, we're not bad. We're, our fundraising efforts to date, uh we know that there's some fundraising in the pipeline that's gonna come to fruition. We, we anticipate to be in the like the one twenty thou- one hundred twenty thousand dollar range in fundraising uh from community members contributing. So that's why I would suggest we, we do this repair and this way we have a, a real class act.
No, I agree with the, I agree with the repair. I just think would they share the expense of it with us if it wasn't?
He's uh, the contractor, uh as Dan uh Prover explained to me today, the, the general contractor, Rich Dolling, who has been fabulous throughout this whole project, has uh agreed to not marking up the, the cost. So it's a, the cost is the labor and materials that Copeland will incur to fix it. Rich is not going to add on any additional surcharges to that so that he profits from it. And usually it's a, there's a ten percent markup. So you'd be looking at around, round numbers of eighteen hundred dollars in markup if that were the case.
But the total is seventeen thousand?
Seventeen thousand, five hundred.
What would be the life again of that? If we do it the right way, if we do it the way they're saying and spend the seventeen, what would be the life of the, like the years? How many years is?
Well, typically twenty to twenty-two years on, on a track. Okay? Provided that there's not some other structural issues beneath it. Uh our structural, we, we core board uh all over the place on that track. It came up really good core underneath. And we've seen saw cuts to that effect since then uh that confirm that our asphalt underlayment is in great shape. You know, the problem is that, you know, you're gonna put this new, we're gonna tear out this three hundred fifty foot section. You're gonna put a new mat down there. That should have a life expectancy of twenty-two years. But we're not gonna do it because when it's time to do the remainder of the track, you're gonna rip the whole thing off.
Okay.
But if we do nothing and just put the structural coat on top and repaint the lines and all that other stuff, we're probably looking at failure in four to five years.
That's gonna cost more than seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah, because you won't have the materials on site. You'll have to mobilize a, a crew to come. The, this is, I think, the most cost effective way to do it is to just, you know, bite the bullet here and, and do it. And like I say, we have had to dip into the, uh, none of the contingency funds for really Gabby. We, we had to do the uh...
Well, we had to do um the light bulb base.
Yeah, the, we had a more ex- extensive foundation for one of the light poles had to be done.
And then we had some savings. I mean, we're, it's...
We've been, we've been very good on the project. There hasn't been over just...
I mean, I, I, I'm always telling, when you do projects this big, you always have, yeah, you always have little hiccups. I might call them or whatever that come up and you go, oh, you need to do these small little things, changes or whatever. Um I just, I, I just wonder, you know, the warranty guarantee and that, that doing this e- extra seventeen isn't gonna guarantee us the, you know, what they're saying. So, you know, I trust your, your judgments.
Okay.
Can we even also maybe for the next meeting, get an update of us, of the costs that we've incurred um that are over?
I think we could do that right now. Yeah. We know what they are.
Not right, I don't think right now. Next, for next meeting and then for, if we could get like life expectancy on some of these, these items that we're talking about.
You mean like the track?
Yeah, the track compared with the field compared with the...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll give you all that. The uh, this, the first scheduled game, uh right now, we're anticipating that the field will be open October one. The first scheduled game is October fourth. It's a Monday night. Uh but we're gonna play that by ear in case we get rainouts, you know, between now and then on uh work. Uh but our intent would be, or my, my suggestion would be that we have a uh town council, board of finance, board of education before the game to do a ribbon cutting on whatever the first game is that the field is open. So if it, if it works out, it will be our, uh, our next board of education meeting, I think, right? Uh October fourth.
In October.
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday, October fourth, yeah. So that may work. I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. Uh do you wanna add that as an action item to go forward? Take a good look at this. This is the Firehouse Deli truck coming to a high school near you on October fourth. Okay? Uh the menu...
Same Tuesday?
Yeah, uh the same Tuesday. Um the menu that night is Philly cheese steaks or that afternoon. Philly cheese steaks, uh, uh Chicago Firehouse Philly cheesesteak. Chicken Parmesan grinders, meatball grinders, uh hot dogs and red hots. The cost uh for an item is five fifty. Students will purchase tickets uh in the cafeteria ahead of time. The truck will come prepared with those items so that they don't have to make them to order instantly, five hundred or seven hundred of them at a time. Uh and this will be our first experiment and we'll see how the vendor works out. We'll see how Sedexo works out on that. But uh we do have a food truck coming to Massic. In your packet also, uh you have on page twenty, the budget timelines. Uh this is uh modeled exactly after uh last year's budget. I know I hate to start talking about budget this quickly uh in the school year, but uh you'll see that in October, we actually uh get mobilized at district office about that. So uh those are the dates. Um and we have the workshops there as needed, et cetera, as we did last year. And then Gabby, you have the uh review of the fund statement, if you would, please?
I do. Excuse me, I was about to say, um, just if you actually, the page before the budget timeline page is page nineteen and you'll see the graph of the insurance claims and you'll notice there was, as I mentioned, um, a couple meetings ago, we did have a large spike in July. Um those are really claims that occurred in May and June. Um it was nine hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. And you can see they, they've dropped since then. Um and our reserve balance did go down to a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, which I, I'm looking at Donna's face.
Does happen, gonna have a heart attack?
Um we, we built it up. We, you know, our teachers are now back and they're now contributing, so we now have more money coming in. I say the same thing that I say now every year at this time due to the Affordable Care Act and reporting on W two forms. We can't just do that nice clean, you know, divide up the budget number by twelve and put money into the account. We have to actually run it through payroll. Um so I, I had my heart palpitations in July and August like Donna did. And I think I was in Jim's office every Monday saying, and hi, I'm really nervous, but we're, we're getting there. Um we also are working with Cigna. Um right now, the way that the balance works is Cigna actually automatically draws down our account. And they actually like to keep a little bit of extra money in their account. Since I don't really have a lot of extra money, we've changed the funding mechanism where they're gonna send me effectively a bill and I will pay them out of our account, uh which I'm a little more comfortable with. So that's, that's kind of where we are with insurance. Uh and John and I actually met with Cigna Innovations last week to discuss, you know, just um the overall, the, the global view of things and how we can sort of maybe make things better and costs and savings and some different ideas from them. Uh two thousand sixteen, uh return to funds and you'll vote on this later. It looks like this is, these are unaudited numbers. It looks like we're returning two hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and three dollars and fifty-nine cents. It seems like a lot. It works out to point oh four percent of your, of what was budgeted. I think I'm pretty close to Manicambras collection. I think he's in the same ninety-nine percentile. Uh most of that, actually two hundred and twenty thousand of that is due to maternity leaves. We had a number of teachers who had uh babies this year and they took extended maternity, maternity leaves, which meant that the difference in their salary and what we pay a sub saved us a little bit of money. So that's the majority of it. Um and that will help pay for the turf field that we didn't get from the town. So it, it all works out pretty well for once. Um and I think that's really about it. I mean, we're looking at spending this year. Um I have a couple of places that I'm still nervous about other than insurance, but hopefully things will, will work out smoothly.
And just so everyone is aware, I did have conversations, several conversations with Mike Manjos about the uh, the reserve funding in the medical. Uh so Mike was very aware that we were dipping that low. Um and he reminded me, you know, said, Jim, we, we, we have an agreement with the board of education. The agreement is if we ever got into trouble with that, that the town would backfill us. Uh and, and that was, you know, the agreement that was struck several years ago about trying to keep the medical reserve at an appropriate level. But this is the risk you run if you, you know, you do get a little skinny uh sometimes, especially during those summer months.
So where's our, where's our comfort spot, not our skinny spot? Where do we wanna be?
The one point eight million is a nice number. One point six to one point eight million in the reserve fund is kinda nice.
And we'll probably get back to that in the, probably the January, February timeframe. I mean, right now, if you, based on payroll, we, we dump in, I wanna say it's about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars every two weeks. Um and since most employees at this time are still using their...
Deductible?
Deductible, the two thousand, four thousand. You know, the thought is, is that we should be able to build it up comfortably before we, I start panicking again, hopefully. And I'm hoping that too. It, it's very cyclical though. I mean, you know, we, we ran into this, I think, you know, back in two thousand and nine. We had a rough year in two thousand and thirteen. So it's just, it's really interesting to see. I mean, there's no ri- reason or rhyme to the cyclical nature of it, but there is a lot of cyc- there's, there's just a cycle to it. I think the other thing is that um what came from this meeting that John and I had last week is that costs are going up. I mean, costs of pharmaceuticals are going up and just costs of, you know, going to the doctor and treatments are more expensive. Um and I think...
I think that's pretty obvious when you think that how, how much we have shrunk the staff here oh since two thousand and eight. We're a much smaller organization than we were in two thousand and eight. And yet you look at that trend line on the graph and it's, you know, it's going like this. It has to be attributable to the increased cost, not the incre- not increased usage.
Anybody have any questions?
We're good.
All right. We will move on then to presentations. And before we get here, I just wanna let the new board member, the board reps know for Massic, you need to leave, especially if our meetings are running really late. Once your report is done, feel free to leave. We're more than happy to have you join us for the meeting if you wanna hear what's going on from our side. But if you need to go because you have tests, you need to do homework, feel free. We will go into um board of education, um professional development and we're gonna do board goals. Johnny, you're using this?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna, John and I are gonna kinda crosswalk this together. Um we thought it was a good time to just uh kinda remind the board where we were with our two, twenty fifteen, eighteen uh beliefs and goals and, and action plans, objectives. Uh we have completed some, so we wanna point those out to you. And we wanna give you the opportunity to kinda think about this and decide, um do we need to update any of these goals or, or uh objectives? So John, if you would, advance to the curriculum and instruction. The goal is the Monroe Public Schools will provide challenging and accessible curriculum through engra- engaging instructional strategies to meet the needs of all students. So we continue to implement the Common Core standards, K twelve. We continue to implement our student success plans. We continue to develop our SRBI. This is a scientific research-based interventions in all of our schools with all of our kids. And continue to uh implement our district and school climate plans. John and I are now meeting with administrators and setting goals, uh again, to the, to the idea of the climate uh plans. Develop the high school uh requirements to be, or exceed those by the state of Connecticut. And then you'll notice that we could uh take out a couple of objectives because we've already completed them. And that's the interim assessments, which we've already done. We've already begun to implement the, uh, the new uh next generation science standards and create a technology literacy curriculum uh for teaching and learning as well as the technology resource acquisition and things since then. So we're still working on aligning the early uh childhood curriculum with the Connecticut standards in that goal. You have been in financial resources. Uh we will maximize student success by hiring, training and retaining the most highly effective professional staff. Uh you'll notice that we uh, we could cross off the implementation of the teacher evaluation and support plan. We've got that well underway at this point. Uh we wanna provide quality professional development for both certified and non-certified staff. And we wanna hire and retain high quality staff and ensure appropriate allocation and distribution of the B O E budget resources along those same lines. I think this year is a, again, another shining year in the kind of, the quality of the teachers that we're hiring uh to replace those who leave us. Uh facilities, we wanna maintain high quality facilities to meet curricular and extracurricular needs. We continue to review, update and maintain a capital improvement and building and grounds maintenance plans. Uh the ad hoc committee work, you know, is done and behind us. Uh we wanna continue to review and revise the security plans for people. We are, uh, in fact, we're meeting with all the faculties. Uh tomorrow, we're doing Juan Hollow on the Alice training that uh Jack, Nicole and I went to and we're trying to migrate our thinking a little bit along the, the idea of Alice training. We wanna review rec- uh recycling and resource utilization plans. And then you can see, we, we've really taken care of, the school roofs are all on a plan. You know, we have a new school roof uh for next year that we have to get. I need a board member still for a, uh, for a building committee. It would be really a cinch to do, so please uh let me know. We, we have to get a quick meeting and uh get that process going in front of town council. We wanna convene a committee uh to study the turf field. As you know, we've already done that and we're almost done with that project. And we replaced the, uh, the step in the oil tank and we have the others slated. So those are, those are pretty well situated. Our educational resources goal, uh instructional materials used to enhance instruction uh and co-curricular instruction will be high, high quality and sufficient supply to fit the ever-changing needs of our students uh and our needs. Um I think the math curriculum resources is a perfect example of our efforts to do that. We wanna review and edit as necessary the tech plan by grade of discipline. We wanna monitor and implement annual school climate surveys. We, we're doing that. We wanna utilize feedback from the ad hoc committee uh regarding enrollment trends. And as you know, we already have to have a correction done on that enrollment study because we're a hundred and twenty-three students over the middle projection. We're only forty-eight students over last year's. Just wanna make sure that message is uh clear. And then we wanna continue and make sure that we have sufficient resources and are available to support everything that we're doing with technology, particularly kids now relying on their own uh technology for their educational needs. Community building, uh this was a new goal, right? The Monroe School District will develop opportunities to inform and involve the community in an active and supportive educational partnership. And we wanted to increase, the objective was community awareness and involvement in Monroe Public School events. And you could see the kinds of activities that are being done around the district, Monroe Reads, uh the Da Vinci Festival, parent lecture series, our, our contributions to the farmer's market, our new end of the year, well, this is now the third year coming, right, Cap? Uh end of the year celebration, capstone, career day and alumni day, celebration of reading and youth sportsmanship workshop, et cetera, are all things that we're doing to make sure that we're engaging the community in all the good work that's being done around here. in all the good work that's being done around here. The Monroe, uh, and community building in Monroe Public Schools will develop opportunities to inform and involve the community in an active and supportive role by updating and implementing a communication plan, and so we take our survey suggestions very seriously. We were talking about those surveys, uh, today in one of our administrative evaluation meetings. Increase social media presence, uh, and we even have some increased, uh, real media, hard group media, uh, with Nina lately. I don't know if you saw the Monroe paper, but I think we had about four or five articles this mon- this week, right?
Mm-hmm.
That was nice. And traditional, uh, media, et cetera, highlighting school business partnerships, highlighting the Monroe Public Schools exemplary people, and recognizing those folks, and the, uh, three times annually superintendent's newsletter to keep us all, uh, on our toes and informing the public of all the good work that's going on. So those are the, uh, those are all the goals that we have, the objectives that are still active. John, do you wanna add anything?
We're meeting with the administrators to look at these goals every year, and, and I guess the thought was, if you guys had any additional goals you thought we should be meeting, or any of the objectives that we didn't put up there?
Need to be tweaked. We would love to have your input on those.
It really does kind of frame our work, as we go through, um, the things in admin council, like, making sure we meet these goals.
And then later in the year, you know that I'll come to you with a booklet, with all of this, with a green section highlighted, but, but where the, where that work, each of these objectives stands, uh, in the overall plan, so, uh, you have a good sense of, uh, of what's driving us. And that's it?
Okay. Anybody have questions? Are we doing, um, when was the last time we did it? Was it three years ago this thing?
Uh, let's see, we did, we, we finished the first round a year early, if you remember.
Right, this is until two, two thousand and eighteen, fifteen to eighteen.
This goes to two thousand and eighteen, so next year, we'll probably start the process again.
Okay.
Next school year. Right?
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, then we will move on, um, to, we have no old business, so we will move on to new business, and I need a motion, um, to add the unexpended funds from the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school operating budget to the capital reserve account per state statute ten dash two, two forty-eight A. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Christine. Second, Carlos. Do I have any, um, any discussion on this? I think Gabby covered it, it's about two hundred and forty thousand?
Two sixty.
Less than half a percent.
Two sixty, two sixty, sorry.
Two sixty, six oh three.
Six oh three, roughly, yeah.
And less than a half of a percent of, of our budget.
I want, I want all my pennies.
Any discussion? Hey, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn for the-
To the track repair, as a motion?
Oh, do we wanna do the track repair as a motion? Do I have a motion to, uh, the track, to, um, authorize the superintendent to do the track repair for seventeen thousand, five hundred?
Before we do that, why don't we do a motion to, add to the agenda?
Sure.
First, and then we could do it-
All right, so let's add that to the agenda, item B, the turf field repair.
That we add the track resurfaced to the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor of adding that to the agenda, is item B under new business? Great. Now, Jim, I'll take your motion to expend the funds of seventeen thousand, five hundred. Christine, you were the second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of your motion? Great, motion passes. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, hearing nothing, I will have a motion, take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, second. Come on, second, somebody. Thank you. All in favor? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.